Good evening and welcome to this edition of the Livermore City Council on a very warm Monday night, June 27th. Thank you for agreeing to come out and be part of the civic conversation tonight. His honor Mayor Marshand is on an excused absence out of the state, so the four of us will keep things together tonight on a very full agenda. With that, would you please do the roll call, city clerk?
Councilmember Spadowski?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary?
Present.
Would you please all rise and join Councilmember Warner in the pledge.
(audience clapping) To the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to start this off tonight, there's many new faces in the audience because this is a happy time when the City Arts Commission gets to take some of the money it has and dispense grant payments to youth artists. And before I come down and ask for some assistance, this year the Commission for the Arts reviewed 26 applications and issued 10 awards. The award certificates were distributed at the high school graduation ceremonies, and tonight we're pleased to give each award recipient a $600 check, a significant figure for a young aspiring artist. The commissioners present tonight are Sally Dunlop, who's the Chair for the High School Senior Arts Program on the Civic Arts Commission, and is Shel Clements here, or Bob? Bob Gossman's here. Gossman is also present with us tonight. So with that, Sally, if you'd like to come up and help me recognize the recipients. I can fix the short leash. There's the checks. And in student and families, my apologies in advance. I saw this list of names for the first time about 18 minutes ago, so I will butcher one or two last names. I'll start with Jeremy, and how do you say it, Jeremy?
Aninos.
Aninos. Would you please come forward, please? Yes, please stay up here with Sally and I, and we'll take a group picture. Veronica Eskamelia, if I'm close. Veronica. Amanda Guile. Amber Murphy. Is Amber with us? Lucas Salaver. And not able to attend tonight is Jada Fox, Brooklyn Higgins, Rachel Kurtser, and Serena Sammons. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you watching at home, our aspiring young artists in Livermore. We're so pleased with them. And next up, we have an annual presentation by Visit Tri-Valley. Barbara?
Thank you. To the city council and the city staff, good evening. It's great to be here and give you a little update on Visit Tri-Valley, what we've been up to. I was told the PowerPoint would be right there. Here we go. Very briefly, I only have a few minutes with you. This is an evolution of our visitor's guide, just to remind you where we came from in 2013 and what our logo looked like, and how we have evolved into our inspiration guide of today. We produced two this year. We decided to do a six-month run on our inspiration guide instead of a year guide because, as you know, the minute you put something in print, something's wrong, and it's out of date. So our next one is coming out in the first week of July, the Inspiration Guide. It'll look the same for the second six months of the year, but the cover will be green. Our digital campaigns, I wanted to give an example of some of the social media and digital marketing that we're moving into with Visit Tri-Valley. We have done, these are some of the most successful campaigns that have received a lot of impressions. The Play and Stay on the Sunny Side of the Bay, which is our winter, you know, come over here at sunny campaign. Our congratulations for the second year in a row to the Livermore Valley Wineries, all the medal winners. These have gone up on digital billboards that I hope maybe you have seen if you've been driving around the Bay Area at all. We had 7 million impressions from this campaign. Party Like a Hop Head and Spread Cheer with Beer is our effort to jump onto the millennials with the beer and not just talk only about wine in our Tri-Valley region, but also to talk about beer. And our beer trail has been very surprisingly popular. You can download a passport online, fill out 10 stops, come into our office and pick up a free beer mug or a t-shirt. So we've had a lot of success with our beer campaign. And then the events that our sports department has booked this year. 12 events have been booked by Todd Dibs, and this is an example of where they are and how many room nights approximately have been associated with each of the events that Todd has booked from our sports development department, Department of One, that Todd, and he's worked, he's managed to put together an alliance that includes all four cities of the Tri-Valley. Tim Sabranti is the co-chair of that sports alliance, and he's been able to meet for the first time ever with parks and recreation from each of the cities and really get everybody to come together so that we are able to book the multi-venue events that we're really trying to go after. In addition, we have a lot of events that already exist in the Tri-Valley that we have become involved in. We either have assisted with sponsorship. For example, we are a sponsor every year of the Little League World Series, and we will continue to be so this year. Or we've helped them with their room bookings. So the first slide is the events that we brought, and this slide is the events that have been here, but we've gotten involved with and helped out. And then we have some that are kind of hot leads right now that we're looking at booking. U.S. Water Polo for Two Years, which would bring 4,000 room nights. So now we're talking big leagues. This is the kind of thing we're looking to book down the road in 2017, 2018. What can we do when either the economy flattens or dips a little? That we have business on the books that will help our hotels with their occupancies as things change and life evolves here. And then Water Polo is another one that we have coming up that we're still working on. So these are the things we're working on, and thank you. What I've handed out to you is a sheet of highlights of accomplishments. I shouldn't have titled this Visit Tri-Valley accomplishments for 2015-16 because that sounds like that's all we did. This is just a highlight of what we've done through the year, and I divided it into a few sections so you have something that you can read and see what do we keep busy with during the course of the year. Everything from more marketing campaigns and digital campaigns that we've done, a lot of events that we support in every one of our cities, the sports events again that I talked about, and also we hired representation in China. We've had it for just six months. We had certain goals we needed to meet during the course of a year, and here are some of the results after only six months that we've gotten from our representation in China, including $1.3 million in media coverage in China. We'll be working on having a website in Mandarin that's coming up in the second half of our six-month contract for China. And our latest campaign is called the Bash, Win a Batch Bash. So the Batch Bash is for bachelorettes that want to have a big party in the Tri-Valley, and this is the ad, oh, I'm sorry. This is the ad that was in the San Francisco Chronicle in their big wedding section, and the things that they can win if they sign up for the Batch Bash is a two-night stay in Pleasanton, 12 bottles of wine from Livermore Valley's Best Wineries, a wine tasting tour on the Livermore Valley Trolley, and then manicures, brunch, and a shopping spree at the San Francisco Premium Outlets. And this is what the ad looked like. We were responsible for helping Livermore Shakespeare and Teaster Terroir from the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. We helped sponsor this page. And so each, instead of having a really small ad in Diablo Magazine that just came out, they were able to take a whole page that just talks about what's happening in the Tri-Valley in Diablo Magazine. And there's my five minutes. I'm open for questions.
Just a quick question. Could you go back to the slide of the number of room nights and the events that were booked for sporting?
Yes.
Did I see correctly that the highest number of room nights were for Robo Games?
Yes.
Yeah.
Robo Games was enormous. It was a huge success with, I think, when we really, it was around 1,200, between 1,000 and 1,200 room nights.
Yeah.
They stayed all over the place, and they're coming back and making it even bigger. They were so happy with the results that they decided to book us a second year, and that's really one of the goals of us, is we bring in an event that has legs so that we don't just get a one-shot deal like the dance competition that came to the bankhead.
Yeah.
We booked it, then they came back and did it again. Robo Games is coming back also.
I'm really glad to see you including those categories in sports. You know, most people don't think Robo Games or anything like that is a sporting event, but they have esports categories now that sell out the Staples Center and the Seoul Olympic Stadium in Korea every year. So I mean, it's becoming more and more popular, and hey, if we can get the room nights out of it, and, you know, sorry, but the esports crowd, typically they like to stay in rooms and order room service and that kind of thing. You know, not go out into the daylight. It'd be perfect for that kind of, you know, event. So I'm glad to see that there.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a good one. That was like the winner of the year. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Great.
As always, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Do you need another one of these?
And now we'll turn to citizens' forum, and these are for items not on the agenda tonight, and because they've not been pre-publicized, the council won't be making any comments about these items, but it's the public's chance to say something about topics off the agenda. We have four cards tonight. First is John Stein.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Gary. My name is John Stein. I live at 1334 Cathy Court. There's a project on the southwest corner of Vasco and East Avenue that's now being graded, and one of the requirements was that the heritage rose bush, a yellow rose that had been there for about 30 years, large, unmaintained but seemed to, you know, thrive, would be preserved. It's not there anymore. I was wondering how it's being preserved. Second question is, the agenda this week is over 1,000 pages. My copy of War and Peace is 1,200, so you haven't quite gotten there yet. But accessing it, downloading it, is often a problem, and I was wondering if you could have a summary agenda and then links to each individual item. That would make it a lot easier to download. Right now, it takes a long time to download and sometimes gets interrupted, or I'm not sure what's happening, but BoardPak, for example, is a commercial product that allows that. It also has an app for iPads and iPhones, and it might be worthwhile making access somewhat easier. Finally, I'd like to wish you all a happy Fourth of July and hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you, John, and we'll have staff get back to you and research your first question.
We actually know the answer to that question.
And it is.
And it has been transported off-site, so it was, yes, it's safe because essentially grading wasn't going to have to happen too near it, so it was renewed, moved carefully. It's being stored off-site, and it will return.
And upon return, it'll be on the corner, right on the corner of East and Vasco, in a much more prominent location.
Very nice. Thank you. Andrew Barker? Baker? Barker? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. On June 12th, the Mercury News reported that a Livermore police officer had been connected to a woman who's at the center of the Oakland Police Scandal that I'm sure you've all heard about. When I read this, I started looking online on social media to try to find out if there's any response from the police department, any sort of statement. I didn't find any, so eventually I ended up emailing the department, and to their great credit, I very promptly got a response back from Chief Harris himself. It was prompt and professional and answered my questions, and I want to thank Chief Harris for that and acknowledge him. But at the same time, not all the citizens of Livermore are emailing the police department directly, and if they were, Chief Harris wouldn't have time to answer all of them. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that when something of this magnitude, some potential scandal, some allegation against a member of our police department comes up, that that should be publicized more broadly, that it should be put on social media, that some kind of public statement should be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll just respond very briefly, that we obviously are told immediately, and due to confidentiality reasons, as the investigation begins, the department does typically not issue a general press release. And it's certainly time today, if anybody watched ABC News tonight, the ongoing Oakland investigation was the lead story at 6:00 p.m. We're not hiding anything. We responded to Channel 7. Chief Harris did a very fine job, and another, and a Livermore officer is implicated. The Livermore officer is on investigatory leave, and Chief Harrison is going to look at the entire situation with a microscope. And we have our utmost confidence in Chief and the men and women of the Livermore Police Department that if it's proven true, it's an aberrancy, it's not the norm for this agency, and we've got the right chief to take care of the matter. So thank you for bringing it up under public communications. Bill Dunlop is next up.
Good, thank you. Bill Dunlop from Livermore. And only one question. We have the scheduled meeting for the 14th about the various development here in town. Does anyone know the starting time?
6:30.
It is 6:30.
6:30.
Okay, good. We hadn't heard that, so we will let people know. Thank you very much, and we appreciate people's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, David McGuigan tonight.
Last time I talked about witnessing somebody, how witnessing someone run into traffic is considered safe by the police. This time I'll talk about a disappearing cane. In his testimony, the officer stated that he witnessed a pedestrian holding a cane. No one else saw a cane, and none was found at the scene. When I asked the chief about this, he said it was not a lie because the officer said that he believed the pedestrian had a cane and that somehow wasn't seating a factor. I didn't really understand it, I have to tell you, and so I asked for clarification, and what I got for clarification is the following. With regards to the officer's testimony that he believed the pedestrian was using a cane, it is my understanding of your allegations that since no cane was documented or accounted for, you took it to mean that the officer was lying under oath. I did not come to the same conclusion and do not believe the officer testifying over a year after the incident intentionally misrepresented the facts. So apparently, the chief is perfectly okay with officers giving false and prejudicial testimony if they're only, you know, mistaken and not doing it intentionally. And given that the average felony is a year and a half to two years after the incident, you would hope the chief would expect his officers to be accurate in their testimony for just a little bit longer. Now, let's be clear. The statement was a response to a direct question by the DA, and no DA will ask a question if they don't already know the answer. So yes, the testimony was clearly intentional, and as given his indefensible professional opinion and other lies that we'll get to in the coming weeks, I'm not inclined to support the honestly mistaken premise, but of course, I am a bit biased. So let's do a little thought exercise. I want you to close your eyes and imagine a man standing, waiting for traffic to pass. Okay. Now imagine him standing with a cane. I'm betting in your mind's eye, the man just became a little more fragile, a little more sympathetic. It would be hard to say that this is not a statement that is contradictory to the interests of the defense and therefore prejudicial, if false. In a response to a planned question, so that it's intentional, the only question is, did the officer know there was no cane? Okay, let's go back to the thought exercise. We have a man standing with a cane waiting for traffic. Now I want you to imagine the man standing with the cane. Suddenly, he starts running with his arms and legs pumping. Where'd the cane go? That's right, you can't run with your arms and legs pumping with a cane. It would throw you off balance too much. Since there was no cane found at the scene, and he couldn't have been running in the way he was observed if he had one, and it's false, and the officer knows it. So I hear unless Livermore testifying to false and prejudicial information, and if felony trial is proper police procedure, and if you question it, it's they're just honestly mistaken. Next time, we'll discuss a truly remarkable coincidence.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the consent calendar. I'd like to pull Item 4.07 for a brief comment and request of staff. Do my council members have any other items to pull? I have no speaker cards on consent. Do you have any? No speaker cards? On Item 4.07, we're adopting the new Stage Two Water Conservation Measures under the direction from the state, and we and Cal Water, serving the other half of Livermore, will be adopting a 10% conservation strategy. Last year, as some of the audience know, we started to make available take-home reclaimed water. People with tanks and their pickup truck could get reclaimed water. It's regulatory burdensome. It is not without cost, believe it or not, long story short. And when it looked like there would be no water restrictions, we have temporarily stopped the reclaimed water distribution program at the treatment plant. 10% is still a conservation measure. I think we've all read the articles that the state is still in some fashion of a drought, and I'd like to see Livermore continue its conservation efforts and harden the conservation savings we all institutionalized last year during the drought. So I just have a simple request, if it's supported by my peers, is just to ask staff to take a second administrative look at distributing reclaimed water, if it can be done on a narrow cost-effective basis to Livermore-only, personal use, homeowner use. We'd be, I'd at least be interested in hearing more about how you might go about doing that.
I've got a couple of thoughts. So I agree on the making sure it's cost-effective or even cost-neutral. As you said, the water doesn't cost anything, but the dispersment does. Then the other thing is, I, some of my neighbors used the water on some of their landscaping and then actually killed it, or, you know, harmed it, in particular redwoods. So I think there could be more along education of how to use it properly because I think it's, it has consequences. So people use it, and then they don't know exactly what they're doing, and it's going to be devastating for some of what they're doing. So I would suggest there be education there. And then I have one last question. I know both the Livermore Water and the Cal Water have got this 10%, but are they both voluntary, or is Cal mandatory? They're both voluntary? Okay.
And it was reported this morning that because the state asked for stress tests on water supplies, some of the largest water distributors in the state have zero conservation measures. Southern California is almost literally on fire. They didn't get enough rainfall this year. We refilled their reservoirs barely once, and some of the largest purveyors say they have three years of storage and thus don't need to conserve at all. I guess they're not looking at the same plan, I see, but it is what it is.
We've heard there is no drought here, right?
Stephen?
Yeah, just to add to that, if we are getting some kind of report back, I want to make sure that we highlight some of the issues that we experienced. You know, I would mention it to neighbors and residents that asked me if we were going to start recycled water again, and you start mentioning the costs involved with it, and then obviously, well, somebody throws out, well, why don't you just use high school volunteers to monitor it, or, you know, some other type of volunteer service? And I don't think that the answer is that simple or responsible, especially with some of the items that we saw last time. We started up the recycled water, people overloading their trucks, and then you looked on next door, and people were complaining, why are the cops citing us? We're doing the right thing. Yeah, but you're also doing the wrong thing by overloading a truck with an unsecured load that could potentially harm somebody if it slips from the back of your truck. So I want to make sure all of that is in any kind of informational item that comes up. I see city attorney, so.
Yeah. If I may, we started off at a consent counter item, and we're kind of straying a little bit further afield here.
Just a follow-up request to staff, conjunction on water conservation.
Sure.
Assuming that we've got a matters now at this particular point, I just need one bit of clarification from three of you, okay? Which is, we understand how to sort of restart a program that looks an awful lot like the one from last year with some additional information. That's one version of a matters. I know how to do that. The second version of a matters is bringing back some information so that we could consider doing that, and you're four weeks out on that, and then a few weeks beyond that. So if I can get three of you to give me direction in one of the two ways, we'll make that happen.
My request was, if my peers support it, to direct, allow staff administratively, if they can solve some of the issues and reboot a more refined program within your administrative authorities, that would be my request. I don't, I don't see that we need to debate and find details six weeks from now.
One, two.
I agree that we want to get it done before the summer's over, right? Two.
It's, it's hard not to get into the conversations, so that's, that's where I'm at right now. I would like, if we were headed down that road, more information, so I don't, I don't know if I'm the latter or... So at this point, what I would recommend is let's continue with the consent calendar, and you can pick this up during your matters initiated towards the end of the agenda, and figure out if there's something you can agree upon, the three of you, that you'd like us to do or bring back. If you're further consideration.
I'll consider a motion and a second then for the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar passes. Number five, public hearings, and also an early announcement. We will be reordering the Item 6 under Matters for Consideration if the council would agree. Councilmember Warner has to recuse himself on Items 601 and 603. Thus, we will be taking 602 first when we get to the Section 6 part of the agenda. With that, we're up to, excuse me, is that okay with the peers? Thank you. I didn't hear anybody saying. No, no.
And we can do seven in front of six.
And we'll do seven in front of six. Public hearings. Item 501 is a hearing to consider adoption of the Engineers Report and confirming the annual levy of assessments for landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and directing actions with respect thereto. Staff.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. My name's Anthony Smith. I'm a management analyst in the Public Works Department. With me this evening is Jeff Schaefer, our Maintenance and Golf Operations Manager. Excuse, excuse me. The city currently has 91 landscape maintenance districts organized under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. In order to levy assessments for the maintenance of these districts, the city's required to hold a public hearing. On May 23rd, the city council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight as the public hearing date. Each year, city staff reviews the cost, maintenance level, and long-term financial stability of these 91 districts. Staff then recommends a level of assessment required to meet the maintenance needs of each district. Staff has authored the Annual Engineers Report. It's available both at City Hall and at the Civic Center Library. This report identifies and describes each of the districts, provides a breakdown of the maintenance costs. Staff is proposing to hold constant the assessment in 31 of these districts, decrease the assessments in 19 districts, and increase assessments for approximately, for 40 districts. In the area of the increases, most are approximately $25 a year or less. Assessments in the downtown LMD vary as development continues to happen, and all proposed assessments are within the pre-proof caps. So tonight, staff is asking for the council to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the levy of assessments. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker? No speaker cards? Is there anybody sitting in the audience that failed to file a speaker card on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I'll move approval of staff recommendations.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.02 is a hearing to consider a request to approve a vesting tentative track map to subdivide an approximately 5.2-acre site for the development of 49 two-story, single-family homes. And I'll let staff make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gary and council members. Signature Homes proposes to develop a five-acre site with 49 small-lot, single-family homes and related improvements, including a private street and public and private landscape. The project includes a planned development district to establish zoning standards that are unique to the development but compatible with the Magnolia Place project to the north. In conjunction with the proposed PD District, Signature has proposed four project amenities that will have community-wide benefits. The proposed development will, the amenities will be secured through a development agreement. In this slide, I'm just going to orient you to the project site, which is located here. This is North Front Road, Vasco Road, Central Avenue.
located here. This is North Front Road, Vasco Road, Central Avenue. Croce School and Vasco Plaza are located on scenic to the north of the project site. Bill Clark Park is located very close to the project site to the west. And then the Arroyo Las Pacitas Trail, that's discussed later in the report, runs east-west, north of the site. The development to the west of the site is zoned suburban residential, and Magnolia Place is located immediately north of the site, in North Front Road, and then the commercial land that separates the site from Vasco Road. And then south of the site is a mini-storage development. The project proposes to change the general plan designation on the property to match that of the Magnolia Place project to the north. This slide illustrates the current site conditions. In this image, north is to the left. About half the site, the northern portion, is the residential component, and then the southern portion of the site is commercial service and currently used for storage uses. The residential part of the property has two homes out near Central Avenue, a mobile home, and a variety of accessory buildings. Some of the buildings date back to the 1940s, and so the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the requested demolition and found that none of the structures had significant historic value. And the HPC recommends approval of the certificate of appropriateness to authorize the demolition. This illustrates the proposed site plan. Again, the project would create 49 lots for individual detached, single-family homes, and an 8,000-square-foot basin at the site entrance, or open space, that includes public open-space amenities and a water-quality basin. The project does include sound walls along the eastern frontage of the property, and a short segment along Central Avenue, and a short segment near the daycare center. The proposed wall design includes a number of attractive design features, including a high-profile cornice along the top, stone-clad columns, and a rich tan color with anti-graffiti treatment on it. Between the wall and the street will be landscape buffers that'll include shrubs and street trees that'll help soften the look of the wall. The site plan itself is organized around a courtyard-style layout, which orients the garages on the homes to the private driveways. The advantage to this arrangement is that the front porches and living space of the homes are oriented to the internal street, and that gives the project an active streetscape. The architecture includes three different floor plans, and each plan has two to three elevation styles that are distinct from each other. Plan two is the center row, and that's primarily used fronting the internal private street. And as you can see, that will front large front porches, varied front facades and roof lines, giving that street an active and well-detailed streetscape. The project entitlements include a request for a planned development district that'll establish zoning standards that are unique to the project, but similar to those of the Magnolia Place project. The PD proposes variations from conventional zoning that would accommodate this type of development, a small-lot, single-family development. So typical of that development style, the PD includes proposed variations from building setbacks, allows smaller lot dimensions, reduced garage setbacks, and smaller yards, again, that are typical of a small-lot, single-family development. And to compensate for these requested variations, Signature has proposed four public amenities that have community-wide benefits. Those include a $100,000 contribution to LARPD to fund improvements to Bill Clark Park. Second includes repairing and slurry ceiling via Arroyo Las Pacitas Trail, about a 2,200-foot reach that extends from Vasco Road to the east to Heather Lane to the west. Third, the Signature would replace old and failing landscape along about a 750-foot reach of public landscape just south of Sunflower Court, near the freeway, and also close to the project site. And then finally, the project would extend about 400 feet of the existing median in Vasco Road. The planning commission and staff found that the proposed amenities adequately compensate for the requested variations and recommend approval. The planning commission held a public hearing on May 3rd and recommend approval of the project. Both staff and the planning commission found that the project is compatible with the Magnolia Place subdivision to its north, and it continues that established development pattern. The project is also a logical transition from the lower-density residential to the west, heading east towards the higher-intensity commercial uses to the east. Staff and planning commission therefore recommend that the city council approve the project, which would include approving the entitlements that are listed on the screen, and certify the mitigated negative declaration. So that is staff's overview. We're available for question, and representatives for Signature Homes are here as well.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Is there any public comments?
Yes.
Oh, I'll wait.
I'll open the public hearing then, and I have three cards. John Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. The density seems reasonable, but because of the odd-shaped lot and the large amount of private streets, the size of the individual lots is awfully small. I think the smallest one is something right around 1,600 square feet, which I assume is smaller than the size of the house and the garage. The setbacks are reduced to as little as two feet, and the garage setbacks are four feet from the street on some of the units. Traditionally, it's been 20 feet, because that offers parking, because in California, without attics and basements, garages tend to be used for storage, not parking. But I, I think, you know, with a little bit of creative design and a homeowners' association, which developers don't like, a much more attractive design with more greenery and open space could be developed. It seems like what we've done is, we say, we want these small rectangular lots with a standard-size house, and the lots keep getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And there's no innovation, no design review committee anymore to look at these things. And it looks like there's almost no greenery, except for the little park at the, on central, which is basically the retention basin and a little bit of landscaping. I, I think we can do better in design. I think that the developments, both to the south and to the west, are lower-density, and at the very least, we should try and make something that's more compatible with those in terms of landscaping. It used to be we had a minimum 300 square feet of private and 300 square feet of public open-space requirements for units. It doesn't look like this development even meets that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Andrew Barker?
Good evening again. We have a housing affordability crisis in Livermore. And I went to, we've already heard that this particular agenda for tonight is very long, 1,000 pages or so. The majority is for this project. These reports are things that you require. Each one of them on its own makes sense. And the requirements for things like a $100,000 bribe for parks, or setback requirements, and all of these other requirements you make, individually, they all make sense. When you add them all up, it costs money. And you think the developers are paying that. But in reality, the developers are, of course, passing that on to future homeowners. So when you consider future projects like this, I think you should approve this particular project. I like it. Consider these extra costs, and consider the people who are paying them, which include me. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card, Connie?
So I think I have the right one. Bill Clark Park is on Molly Circle, correct? Is that the?
Yeah, just west of the site.
Yeah, okay. Where I'm having trouble with any more building in that area right now is, it is close to Springtown area, close to golf course, the Springtown, it is, you know, if you're going down Blue Barrow, you access it through West Area, and then your, you know, main roads are Vasco and First Street going in. I really, really, really think that we need to visit this area as a whole. You know, we get, little by little, we're adding to the density in that area, and it really has not been addressed generally or specifically. I know, Lorraine, you said you were interested in seeing a specific plan for that area. And I don't know if this was the property I was reading about in the general, because it was 1,000, you know, pages. But where I was like finding a little bit of, a little bit of nervousness and trouble, trouble with, you know, the congestion in that area, is the density changes. We have a lot of high-density around that area, and it's hidden well. And a lot of it was past golf course land. At the December 27th meeting, you heard a gentleman say that originally, our golf course in that area was 27 holes, before your time, way before your time. But then in 1970, I think it was three when the deeds went through, there were two separate deeds for the golf course, and they went through a month apart, you know. One went through in April, and one went through in March. And I've been asking for a couple of years now, you know, just to get the parameters, the boundaries of that area, where it was and what the deals were. Because I know Kathy Brown designated some land as surplus land, but at the same time, golf course land was bought very cheaply with the, you know, promise that it would be kept, you know, as a golf course. But where do we perceive that golf course? Is it the land that was used recently for the golf course? Was it that additional nine holes to make 18 that went around, or that 27? And I think it's real important that we look at this area as a whole. I know you have, you know, your feelings about Springtown. I heard you at the last meeting, you know, talk about the disgusting pond. We have great people in Springtown. We've got teachers, police officers, firefighters. We've got a lot of realtors, a lot of public employees working there. And I just want to make sure that however you build out this area, you're not taking advantage of a situation. A lady from the North Livermore Alliance Group told me there was elder abuse with the acquisition of that land, and I really think we should address it and make sure that's not the case before moving further in any shape or form with that land. And thank you for hearing me out. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Would staff briefly, to the four or five key questions raised?
Sure.
Start, starting with the size of the lots and setbacks and the zoning legacy decisions of the general plan for this parcel.
Well, with respect to the lot sizes and setbacks, it is typical for a small-lot, single-family development to have higher floor area ratios and smaller setbacks and smaller yards than traditional development. It's typical to have smaller lot sizes and reduce setbacks compared to the traditional zoning districts RS or RL. The project did go through design review before the planning commission. There were a number of design comments that the planning commission gave, and those are reflected in the conditions of approval.
Can I ask one question? When you say typical, typical of Livermore or typical in general? And where, where else do we have this?
Magnolia Place, located to the north, is, is similar. The, the reserve is another small-lot, single-family development on Cromwell. So we have examples. The vines is another example that's similar. And then there will be a homeowners' association for the project that will maintain the, the internal landscape for the project.
The other thing staff just might want to respond to, certainly, we heard the comments about city fees and the, and the cost of housing, and that's not before us in this agenda item tonight, but thank you for the comment. And certainly, there are many involved residents in that part of the community watching what's going on with the golf course area. But you might just briefly state for the record how far away from any of the golf course, or the western section of that part of the city is versus the location of this parcel. And maybe you want to even bring your map back up. So I appreciate the comments about land use in and around the Springtown Golf Course. In my mind, this is a considerable, considerable distance away, and a combination of two parcels that were, have been in that condition for some time.
Did you want to comment on the distance?
Yes, address that, kind of the physical location issue, because it's...
Sure. The Springtown Golf Course is about 3/4 of a mile to the, to the west of this project site.
Can I restate my question? I think you misunderstood it.
No, it's okay. He answered the question.
No, I, I think you misunderstood my question.
Other comment period. This is closed.
I think you misunderstood my question, just so you know.
Thank you. I just wanted the physical location. Other questions?
Yeah, just a quick comment and also a question. I did meet with the developer to get a sense of the history of this project and some of the public outreach, but could staff comment on some of the public outreach efforts and comments from the neighbors about the project? We don't have, I don't, I assume we didn't have anybody here tonight that lives in the vicinity comment, I mean, the immediate vicinity of the, the project. So I was wondering what some of those comments and concerns were.
Before the, the city's review began through the planning commission, Signature Homes had hosted two neighborhood meetings. And at the, the first neighborhood meeting, they had 10 to 12 attendees who lived close to the project. And there were some concerns raised there about the, the layout of the, the site where the open space was located. The original proposal had some duplex units within it, and neighbors had raised some concern with that. Signature responded by replacing the duplex with one of the single-family detached homes, shifted the open space from the center of the project out to Central Avenue, where it has more of a community benefit. At the second neighborhood meeting, there were just, I think, two attendees, and then there was not public comment at the planning commission meeting.
Okay, because just as a, another general comment, and living in that area, and just down the street off of North Front from the site, and I drive by it frequently, there are some current nuisances associated with the site. So I think there is a positive aspect of, of having some improvement to the site. It's, it's quite often that you swerve trying to avoid a chicken on North Front from the site. I guess it answers the question, they're crossing the road to get to the Wiener Schnitzel. But there's just, there's, you know, rooster issues, and, and if that's even a term, rooster issues, I just said that. But, you know, one of the buildings is a, of, not building, is a, a storage container that you would see on the back of a semi, that has plastic lawn chairs on top and a ladder leading up to it, so people can kind of hang out. So I think in many respects, this is, this would be an improvement to the site. Also, the LARPD money to improve the park, do we have any controls, or do we know if the costs for improving the park come under the $100,000 level? Do we know that that, the remaining funds will be spent somewhere else in neighborhood North Livermore? Do we have any control over that?
That was based on a estimate of specific improvements to the tot lot at the park.
Gotcha. So it's a pretty, pretty solid number?
Yes.
It's not just a, hey, give us 100K and we'll improve this park. It's, we have a very itemized estimate, and it's a, it's a pretty good figure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a list of specific improvements.
All right, thank you. Also, I'm sorry, wanted to comment that the, I really appreciated the planning commission and the historic preservation's comments on this item, and the staff reports involved with that. As, as always, one of the first areas that, that we've all mentioned that we go to are the planning commission and any other committee or commission's notes on the project, and it's, it's a great help. So thank you.
Just a couple of questions to further vet out what one of the speakers said. What is the shortest driveway in the project?
Four feet.
So impossible to park a car in?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the narrowest setback between houses?
I believe it's six feet. The, the minimum required setback is three feet from property lines. So we, we'll have some that are separated by six feet.
Okay, thanks.
Question, I've got one question. I've noticed in, I believe in some of the projects we've approved, that the landscaping around the buffer between the, you know, the sound wall and the street, I would say is not adequate. And I would like some assurance that when all is said and done, we won't see the sound wall. There won't be any place for graffiti. I mean, it'll, because as I go around town, I mean, where the walls are right next to the sidewalk, and things don't look so good. But where we've succeeded, say, on Vasco across from the lab, it's, it's very nice. But then you go north to that new one going in, it's not so, not so good. So what kind of assurance do we have that when all is said and done, we won't see the sound, sound wall?
Under the, the proposal that's before the council, there's a, about a 10-foot landscape buffer between the, the eastern wall, the one near North Front. And there's larger shrubs in the background, smaller shrubs in the foreground, and street trees. So those will mature to four to five feet high. It's a six-foot sound wall, so there will be some visibility of the wall, but it'll be softened by the landscape and the trees.
Why, I mean, so my question is, why do, why do we have to see the wall? And can we do this so that we don't have to see the wall when all is said and done?
Do you mean with landscape that goes on the wall?
Well, no. What I'm, what I'm saying is, in some places, when you don't see the wall, it, the physical appearance is much better than when the wall is there. And I'm just suggesting that I think we've not done as well on some projects, and that the landscaping, in my opinion, is inadequate. So I'm requesting that when all is said and done, the landscaping hides the wall.
So that would be an amendment to the project before you, as a part of your approving motions, an amendment to basically have us adjust the landscaping to meet that objective? We can certainly carry that out consistent with all of the rest of our requirements, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Other question? In reviewing the planning commission record, my perspective of this is, we are trying to balance economic constraints, cost of land and permits to the cost of housing. And as we do infill projects like this, there are, there are trade-offs. I found this particular project got better after the first review and the, and the public input and the planning commission input. And, and I think, I agree with, I think, what I believe Councilmember Spodowski was saying, it's an improvement to, to that side of, of the main entrance road and, and the access to the community, and it's going to bring about a different housing product type that we are trying to diversify in town. So based on the positive record and the work the planning commission did, I'm willing to support a project. If my peers so move, there are actually four different motions we're going to need tonight on this item.
Shall I start the reading of the staff report here? Okay. I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution adopting and certifying the mitigated neg, negative declaration to also adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment 15-004, introducing an ordinance approving and adopting the planned development residential 15-001 and development agreement 15-002, and a, adopting a resolution approving the vested tentative tract map, the site plan design review, the certificate of appropriateness, subject to conditions, including the making of the findings for vacancy of approximately 390 square foot area of North Front Road access right of way as part of the project.
And hiding a wall.
That would be an amending motion, or I can include that in the motion, but if I, I would like to, well, I mean, I don't know if I should leave it for an amending motion, but I'd like to attempt to then add having staff look at enhancing the landscape along the wall to the maximum extent practicable to help hide the wall. Fully realizing that we can't hide the entire wall, just making sure that, I, I don't know if we could, that's, that's my concern, is that we don't direct to hide the entire wall, because I don't know if you can physically do that with, I know, I'm getting into the weeds, so. Yeah. Anyway, just directing staff to enhance the landscaping along the wall to reduce the visual impact.
Yeah, to nothing.
To, to nothing? Let's define nothing. You know, so, okay.
I, I think people got the point.
I ramble.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded by Councilmember Werner. Any further discussion?
Just very quickly, I just want to state, I cannot support this project for a variety of reasons. I love the project. I think it's certainly good for the community. I think it's fantastic. However, and I, and I'm very mindful of the price of homes in our community. However, we've got a lot of housing going on, and I don't think we've quite got it right with this one yet. To have single-family homes where it's impossible to park in your driveway, I think is doing a disservice to that neighborhood. And we could make the houses a little smaller, and then you got room for the garage. And I know the rationale for bigger houses is so you can make, get more money out of them, but I'd rather have a smaller house where we, people could, could actually park in their driveway. I think we're going to end up with a neighborhood where every, all the cars are on the street, and it's, I think it's doing a disservice to our community. So I will not be in support of this motion for that point. I, I highly doubt there's a way to amend this plan to totally take care of the driveway issue at this point.
Can, can I ask one question, following up what you just said? When you said that this was, I forget the word, typical or something, and you said that there were other ones in Livermore, do the other ones in Livermore have that short a driveway?
We do have some examples. Shea Montage is, is a similar example with alley-loaded homes that don't have driveways.
So, and how is it, what's the experience with that?
We haven't received complaints from residents that there's insufficient parking.
But in Shea, they can park in the alley, correct? This project?
No.
So, okay, so they're, they access their garage from the alley?
Yes.
And then, and they park in the streets?
Yeah, so in that regard, it's similar to this one where there's a very shallow apron off of the driveway that provides access into the garages.
I don't, I don't know if it helps you. Reason why I got past that was because I saw the four feet, not even as a driveway, but as part of a setback buffer back of public right of way. And for the projects that do alley or driveway front with literally no parking, I just saw it as an extension of that type of densification of use.
And also, I, I share your concerns, and I specifically, I was looking at the dedicated on-street parking spots. I don't know, how many do we have on the private streets? They're, they're basically turnouts for parking. Well, I, I just, you know, I don't, I don't think you need to look it up, but.
Yeah.
There are dedicated, so it's not that private streets are no parking, and the only spots to park are inside the, the garages. You have both of those street layouts there do have on-street parking, so it provides additional space.
You'll have roughly one, one's on-street space per house.
So it's about three spaces total per house?
Just over. It's about 3.2 internal, about 3.4 spaces per house if you include the central frontage.
So in those other areas, they had this similar situation, when you have guests, a party or something like that, there's not a significant problem? You say not many complaints or at all?
We haven't received complaints about the one that I cited, Shea Montage.
What you generally have is, you do have very full parking utilization during peak periods. It is likely that people will not be able to park immediately in front of the unit that they are visiting, and that those are typical throughout both this product type, all of your small lot, single-family, as well as all of your townhome product in the city. You generally can find a parking space within the development, and that is, that is the trade-off. Essentially, you have less space for cars once you cross over the 10-unit-per-acre threshold. But one of, actually, and one of the things you saw actually managed in the staff report is the, the trash day. And so you saw that there's a very specific issue, because that is something that we've had to work through with our previous projects, and that is included in the conditions of approval here. But essentially, we do believe that there is adequate parking, but it is different than living on a half-acre home site in South Livermore and some of the neighborhoods down there, or a full acre, or even a third of an acre. It's a very different look and feel to that. But we don't generally have the full-length driveways in product type at this density and above.
Yeah, you bring up a good point. As I was listening to this conversation, I actually reflected on the South Valley Livermore viticulture, edge of city neighborhoods where we restricted street width to make them feel much more pedestrian and just quality-of-life friendly. And we've got parking pockets in those areas. We don't allow curb parking the entire run of the streets. We've, we've clustered off-site visitor parking. Yes, those are large lot homes. Yes, I understand they have large driveways. Yes, I understand many of them have three-car garages. But once you leave the parcel, there, there is never adequate parking if everybody hosts a Super Bowl party at, at once. So I, I saw this again as a continuation of that design theme, but in, miniature's not the right word, but at, at a different scale. So I, I kind of got over the density, trying to find the balance point of cost of land, cost of housing, and a product type that might appeal to more entry-level buyers who can't yet afford, afford that large lot, single-family home. Further discussion or comments? No, no. I'm about to say, and on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner in the nay. The motion carries. Thank you. So now, the slight rejigger, rejuggling of matters for consideration under item six, we'll proceed with item 6.02, discussion and direction regarding the asset management program for pavement. Staff, as you reconfigure?
Mayor, uh, acting mayor, and council members, my name is Sherri Sheets. I'm your city engineer. Tonight, we're here to talk about the pavement management program that we have today and some proposals we have for modifying it. You folks are the proud owner of over 680 miles of streets within the city valued at over a half a billion dollars. 60% of those streets are local residential streets. The 40% is split about evenly between collector and arterials. Currently, the city uses a regional pavement management program that's focused on maintaining streets at the lowest possible lifecycle costs. This is evaluated through a visual assessment of the pavement condition, and it's rated from zero being a failed condition to 100, which is a new street. So the pavement condition index ranges from zero to 100, and it kind of gives you an idea of, is it totally failed or is it brand new? In order to meet the minimized lifecycle costs, the pavement condition index, PCI, is established at 86. And the reason for that is, when you're at 86 and above, we can use preventative maintenance strategies like crack sealing and slurry sealing, which are very cost-effective strategies. When you dip below that, you start going into resurfacing and rehabilitation, which are orders of magnitude higher in terms of costs. Region-wide, our network is kind of middle-of-the-road. We're at a 76 overall on our network. What has helped us achieve that is the fact that over the last two decades, we've had a lot of development coming into the city and, and elbate a lot of new streets being installed by the developers. Despite that fact, since 2004, our PCI rating has declined from 82 to 76. So even though we've got a lot of new streets coming in, we're still on the decline. The existing expenditures, what we currently expend annually on the roads is about $4.3 million, and it's made up of portions of our gas tax, measure B and measure BB program, our refuse vehicle impact fee, which we have on, specific to our locality, and vehicle registration fees. We have seen declines in gas tax due to fuel efficiency of cars increasing, the fact that the gas tax has no cost-of-linge adjustment inherent in it, and because we have electric vehicles starting to come into the market. That has been partially offset by the fact that we have passed new sales tax measures, measure BB, added a good chunk of change back into our program. And the state is now considering legislation that will help increment the gas tax and offset the losses that we've seen since the 1990s when it was originally, well, last updated, I should say. In addition to that, we've seen regulatory changes for our programs that have required that we incorporate aspects into our pavement management program that are new. ADA mandates for accessibility keep increasing. We've had climate change element protocols that require us to look at methodologies that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And we have a new program for green infrastructure that is being, being foisted upon us by the State Water Resources Control Board. So all of that adds to the costs of maintaining our infrastructure. Staff has gone through and analyzed what would happen to our infrastructure if we continue down the road that we are currently on, using $4.43, $4.3 million a year in annual expenditures, and trying to optimize the overall PCI to 86. The result shows that there'll be a decline in the PCI, which today is 76, over the 30-year period, and we chose 30 years because that's the typical lifecycle of a street. It'll decline from the 76 middle-of-the-road to a 48, which is pretty low. The backlog at the end of that 30-year program will be little over $300 million. Staff also analyzed what it would take to maintain the PCI at its current level of 76. And the results showed that if we invested $7.1 million a year, that's a 65% increase in our budget, that we could achieve a maintenance of PCI of 76 across the network. Now, not every street would be at 76, but the overall average would be at 76. Because we are constrained by funding limits, the city has begun an overall asset management program, which assesses the methodology of delivering services and looks at programming work based upon the probability of failure and the consequence of failure. Probability of failure can be determined, generally speaking, based on the pavement condition index, while the consequence of failure is more related to traffic volume, speed, modality, do we have buses, bikes, trucks on the street, and access to essential facilities like medical facilities, fire stations, police stations, et cetera. The asset management program has evaluated additional advancements in treatment, such as cold-in-place recycling or bonded wear courses. Adding these to our repertoire can reduce the 30-year backlog by approximately 10%. So we have always continued to evolve our methodologies, but these are some new ones that are coming into their own now that we can also include. Staff developed a prioritization matrix that was based on risk associated with each street segment. The probability of failure times the consequence of failure being that matrix analyzing risk. The analysis showed that under the current strategy, the city will have 78 miles of roads in the highest-risk category in, at the end of 30 years. By employing a new risk-based approach, we could lower the number of miles at highest risk from 78 miles to 40 miles using the current budget. If we added $1.25 million to the budget annually, beginning today, we could eliminate all the highest-risk streets. Staff is now recommending to council that you direct us, first of all, to incorporate a risk-based approach into our pavement management program, and, secondly, that you ask us to further refine it, to consider the cost. further refine it, to consider the costs and consequences of including a minimum pavement condition level for local streets. That concludes our presentation, and we're here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was going to say, is that, you know, my day job, I'm in the middle of asset management decisions, and so I certainly agree with this approach of the adding in the probability and the consequence. One of the things that I was thinking about, because we're trying to go to more bicycles and pedestrians and everything, is that the consequence of a deteriorated road for a car is less than that for a bicycle, or even a pedestrian. So that you explicitly take that into account when you do this. So, for example, that even if you're going to say a road is less priority for a car, it actually might be a very high priority to make sure that the bike portion of it is in good shape. So I would just modify this to incorporate the different modes of travel and where they, what part of the roadway they're on, and not just let the whole section go to the same amount. Because a little pothole for a car, not so much as a problem as for, you know, it might hurt your suspension or something, but you're going to really do in a bicycle.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments?
Yeah, just a comment. Hate to say it, but I'm excited for cold-in-place recycling. I've seen demonstrations before, and it doesn't sound like much, but it's actually tearing up and reusing the street in place, which is just, I mean, that's, you know, hopefully we can technology our way out of a little bit of this with the, you know, rubberized mixes and things like that. So the crack sealing and slurry seal are included in the current pavement management program?
Yes.
And also pothole repair? Is that in pavement management or a separate?
Yes, we've included that portion, even though it's done by a different group, it's still in the program.
Okay. The other, you mentioned green infrastructure. I really don't want to talk about that right now, but it is coming down the pipeline, and it's going to be a big impact to our streets, and it's being imposed by the Regional Water Quality Control Board without any regard for costs to local cities. So that's something that we need to keep tracking and be very concerned about. But you also said the $1.25 million per year to eliminate the risk miles. How does the newly funded and newly formed, what was it, the recession account that we created, how does that play into this? Could this be something that we, you know, accumulate five, six million in that account, and then, when the next dip hits, we get more street mileage for our buck? Is that?
So the short answer is yes, and the slightly longer answer to that is, is the framework that you're all carrying around in your head, which is, we're actually giving you a serial here in little tiny bites by asset class. And so that's obviously why we're not asking you tonight to tell us exactly how many dollars to put to this particular asset class. But your observation that, you know, both timing and amount can basically be sculpted as a part of your overall asset management plan after we bring back all the pieces to you, and then come up with, you know, some alternatives and some recommendations for you as to how to allocate existing resources and/or whether some of the additional resources you've set aside should be prioritized for particular asset classes in particular ways.
Okay. Then, under a scenario where we do receive ban from heaven or some other funding source, what would be the maximum level of funding that we could handle? I mean, even from a staffing standpoint, I mean, do we have a certain level that if we did receive a large windfall of money, now you run into the problem of, okay, we need to be able to organize and to do all the streets at the same time with the proper supervision? I mean, is there a certain level that, I don't know if that, you get where I'm coming from, I mean, if everything was ideal, would we have to hire additional staff even to get to certain levels of maintenance?
Generally speaking, I would see these are incremental, and because we're just usually applying the same treatment over a different limit, I don't want to say there's no additional cost, there will be a slight increase, but--
Inspection and things like that.
Yeah, but in general, I think we could, unless you tripled the program, which I'm not imagining happening, I think we could accommodate this under current staffing.
It depends on the nature of it as well. In other words, if, for example, you got, I don't know, $15 million, the federal government says you have to spend in the next 12 months, or you lose it, there would be absolutely staffing and logistical impacts to do that. If you got $15 million, and I could stretch it out over five years, it's a very different question. So occasionally, money comes in big chunks, and you have to use it really quickly. That, of course, was the federal government's program during our last recession, but generally, our funding sources have a little longer timeframe, and we can absorb them, as your city engineer noted. And again, we would deal with those problems, you know, should they arise. You'd have staff, your best and brightest, thinking up very creative thoughts of how we could actually make that work. That's usually not been an unsolvable problem for us, is to deploy resources if we have them.
Okay, because I start fantasizing about building this fund of the recessionary fund, and we build it so large that when it hits, it's like a, you know--
And we'll see that one coming. Again, that's not going to surprise us.
We could start incrementally spending it, then all at once say, okay, this is the lowest point, let's blow the account. All right. Thank you.
So my feedback on this was, it's another example of just staff moving us in the right direction to do a couple of things under, quote, financing our future, or as we've also called it, our unfunded liabilities. I'm certainly like the risk-based approach and the matrices you're using. You'd have my full support to pilot those, at least over the next, you know, budget cycle or two. I'm sure there'll be some continuous learning, fine-tuning applied there. I was also intrigued by the comment, or the suggestion of, a little more money, not the full $7 million, could dramatically drop the worst of the worst back. So as this comes back to us with the others, I clearly heard the incremental, we're getting this on asset type at a time, but bringing us back a matrix of, you know, if you made these decisions in risk-based strategies, instead of traditional funding impacts, the alternative funding impacts now in cumulative are X, and we can look at general fund growth, as we've done with other things, such as OPEB, and said, we're going to pay into paving and other infrastructure management a risk-based amount to truly buy down, not eliminate, I understand, but buy down the 30-year long-term impact and prevent catastrophic failures. The other request I have, don't answer it tonight, take it offline for research. I believe I heard that the pavement index today is an average measure, and as we know, depending on the size of the sample, how many miles are past average could be a little bit or a ginormous amount. I'd like you to consider perhaps a fractal measure, and maybe the miles at an index ought to be 75%, 85%, 90% of target, or at least just be able to describe to us that, well, where does average put us? And if average is half of a huge problem from a percent of goal measure, that's one thing, is we consider funding. If that data set's pretty narrow, and the fractal measure looks a lot closer to average, and we're making solid progress, then I just think that'll help us where we spend our money, and just run the numbers a little differently and just food for thought.
So to make sure we understand exactly what you're getting at there, is the concept of an average can hide very high numbers as well as very low numbers. You want us to explicitly take into consideration, I'm assuming you don't care too much about the high end, but essentially the low end, to make sure perhaps there might be a standard below which we don't want a street to fall below, or we want to know what the bottom 20% of our streets look like, something that essentially gives you some more information over the entire spectrum of what your condition is, rather than a single number.
I mean, just look at the dispersion of the--
Yes, very good. We can do that.
So I've got one other question real quick. One thing I was struck in reading the report is that the application of the new technologies, you weren't particularly hopeful that it would do much. So I'm thinking, is it because roads have been around since the Romans, and there's not a lot happening? Or I'm surprised that with some of the stuff that's going on, that you could dramatically change the road.
Actually, they've been helping a lot. The technology has helped a lot. It's made us a lot more cost-effective, but the basic problem is the price of materials is outpacing what we can do in savings for technology. And so that's really where the difference--
So the technology really helps, it's just too pricey. So over time, if the price comes down, then it could have a big shift, then, is what you're saying. So technically, it makes a bit of impact, it's just costs a lot. Is that what I just heard?
I'm not sure. Let me try again, on saying it. So what's happening is, as we employ new methodologies, they're more cost-effective to employ in terms of labor, and in sometimes materials, but mostly it's labor. On the other hand, the cost of the materials are escalating at a higher pace and a more costly rate than my technology can bring me down. So although I get a 10% savings with the new technology, so that means I am beating the overall costs of increases of inflation with technology, but that's about all it can do.
So essentially, it's a net. So you're actually doing really well. Without that, essentially, you'd be losing by your rate of inflation every year. So essentially, at some future point, to be 10% ahead, you're doing quite well, which, of course, points you to your main problem, which is, your funding sources are not indexed to either fuel efficiency or just even basic inflation.
No, I understand that, and I think the point here is that this problem doesn't get solved by us alone or any city. So that at some point, the state and the federal government have got to step up, and people have got to have the appetite to pay for it. And the question is, how do we minimize the damage until we get a reality check here, really? So praying for hovercars to eliminate pavement management is maybe not an option in our lifetime. But actually, living in a, off the top of my head, 26-plus-year-old neighborhood street, been slurry sealed twice, 30 years seems like a long time when you're in year one, but 30 years to failure in the city's terms comes by at a fairly rapid clip. And this is, I know it's boring to those of you at home, but we really need to take care of the streets, the pipes, and our infrastructure, because in less than an adult lifetime, the stuff can deteriorate and need catastrophic repairs, and then we're leveraging debt and leveraging our successor's ability to pay for other services. So this is important. And when we get to build out, then, you know, then we're stuck with what we have, and then it's a different story. And we look like unnamed parts of America that are resting in decay, so we understand. Staff, did you get enough collective feedback, or did you want something more focused? Okay, thank you very much. No, disdirection. So it was the will of the surviving council members on recusing that you recuse to the conference room until we do item seven. No? Okay, so we'll move up. Since we only have three items left, and Councilmember Werner, for business reasons, has to recuse on two of the three, we'll now jump ahead and take item seven, council and committee member reports. Councilmember Spodasky.
Sure, I only have one item to report. Earlier today, I attended the Wheels PNS Committee, which is the Projects and Services Committee. The major item to report on that one is that it looks like two Livermore schools were selected for a Measure BB pilot program for affordable student transit, and it'll be East Avenue Middle School and Livermore High School. Monthly passes for the system for students that require for, students who qualify for discounted or subsidized lunches, they will receive free passes for the entire year to ride the bus system. All the other students at East Avenue and Livermore High School will receive reduced-price monthly passes, so about $30 a month to ride the buses. The first year, it looks like they'll be showing their student ID, and they'll have ID, and they'll have colored tags, which will indicate what school they come from and what part of the program they're in. And then, it looks like in '17, '18, they're looking at moving to the Clipper Card. So giving each student a Clipper Card and saying, go ahead and ride the system. It's a pilot program for about four years, and we're going to see how many middle schoolers then transition over into high school riding, and if they continue to use the Clipper Card, then we could see post-high school, you know, if they're riding. We can also see when they're riding, so if they're leaving school at lunchtime, you know, we'll be able to send out those truant officers. But no, joking. That's the only item that I have to report.
Would you like to take a stab at the reclaimed water? Because I'm happy with a report back. I was just trying not to--
Yeah.
--get it a summer, it's a summer-long program, but I'd like to hear you out and take a stab at it and see if we get three or four.
Yeah, I think, I think we addressed it adequately in our policy that we established that if we are under certain drought restrictions, then we implement the program. If not, then we stop the program. I am, I am okay with staff looking at it again. I just don't know if we need to hear a report back. I don't know if there's, what closure do we get at that point? Does it just not happen, and we're fine, or do we need to come back? That's why I was saying, you know, if we're going to have them come back with some kind of report, let's just say, let's get the information and come back with a report. I think I'm fine with the current system. That's just where I stand on that, on that issue, so.
And I brought it up because I've had considerable, as I mentioned, inquiries from users who believe they're still doing something green and beneficial just for their own parcel within plant health limits. So I think if staff thinks there's modifications to be made, wants to then agendize it and bring it back, let's just go down that path. If there's, if staff's research finds otherwise, they can tell us informally, like they do on other items, and if they think there's a there there, they can agendize it. So I agree with what you just said, and I was just putting a time scale on it. I think if we're going to do it, and if there is something to be done, we should do it reasonably quickly so that it has value this season.
I see that. Also, I'm just, you know, if we don't, when do we stop it beyond this? Are we now saying that we're going to try and find an economical way to continue this even through? Because people, I mean, they love that recycled water, and if we, you know, start to, if we're looking for ways to continue it, I would want it to be cost-neutral, but I haven't heard anything indicating that it would ever be cost-neutral. I know people who bought a truck, a trailer, and the container for recycled water, and it's just, you know, because people, hey, you're giving away free water, I'll take it, not, you know, thinking of the trips and the air quality issues and the safety, so--
We didn't mean cost-neutral to the person who wants the water.
No, I know.
We meant cost-neutral to the city. So the idea is, if they're willing to invest that much--
Right.
--then we should be able, what I'm saying is, I agree with Vice Mayor Carey here, we ought to do something, if we can, and we ought to do it, I'm just adding to it, let's do it quickly, and come back with, can we solve it? And included in that is trying to be cost-effective, cost-neutral, or whatever, but we have to come up with a plan so that we're not stuck subsidizing this forever, because it does have a cost.
I, yeah, I agree with you there. I just don't want to subsidize something in perpetuity, no matter what the conditions are, so.
And not problem-solving, but the question of subsidy is, to whom is it going to and for, you know, and how much? I'm fine with bringing the whole thing back. I think we cold-turkeyed the program when we thought there'd be zero conservation. As I said earlier, we're at 10% conservation. The climate issues are still at a minimum uncertain. I just would like to have a more refined discussion to say, can any of it be brought back and solve some of the problems? And I think you're right upon reflection, that ought to be a second discussion by the full council, when staff has looked at all of the things discussed tonight and feels comfortable bringing us back some policy choices.
Okay, I'd agree with that.
All right, to close that item, just to make sure that staff's desperately trying to understand what our marching orders are at this particular point, so here's what I'm going to see, and see if we can get several of you to agree. The staff is directed to bring back an item for future council consideration. We've heard your basic concerns dealing with availability and subsidy, those basic issues. But we are looking at a timeframe here where the earliest that that would be back to you, essentially, is the second meeting in July. You are four days away from publishing your next agenda, and the item would not have, would make, not make your next agenda. That will place you squarely at the beginning of August for this year's decision. So as a practical matter, you will not have a recycled program until late in the year. And I think also, as a fairly practical matter, you guys understand the trade-offs. We can bring those back in a fairly crisp way for you to consider. But if I-- way for you to consider. But if I understand, you're expecting an item back for your consideration at that meeting.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Turner?
Just a couple things to report. On the 22nd and 23rd of June, I attended the League of California Cities Executive Forum. Very interesting, a lot of good information. One of the hot topics amongst most of the cities was medicinal marijuana, and a lot of cities either putting out initiatives and/or settling ordinances so that they can establish local control before the election in November. So I'm assuming, I believe we're going to be hearing that in the next couple of months. So that's great, that we can deliberate further on that. And a lot of great information's been coming out from the League on different mechanisms and things on that issue. On the 23rd, I came back from the League in time to attend the mayor's State of the City address. I thought he'd be here to talk about it. But it was amazing to hear all of the wonderful things going on in our community, and especially all of the citizen input and the volunteers that we have. And, you know, for those of you that, especially staff, for those of you that were unable to attend, everything he talked about, we couldn't, we couldn't accomplish without the folks sitting here in this room. And this is absolutely an unbelievable place to live, work, and sit on the, sit up here. And because all we have to do is say something, and this group of people that are sitting here and at home, just make it happen. And a lot has been made happen in the last couple of years. And so we owe that all to the, to the staff. So please share that with your, with the people in your departments. And then on the 25th of June, I was honored to represent the city at the Relay for Life at Livermore High. It was a fantastic event. And just lots of great people out there. And I guess that's all I have to say. They did a great job organizing it. Lot of good community support from community partners out there. And I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Werner?
Nothing to report on, but I was, wanted to follow up on Mr. Sein's question about downloading the document. I personally don't have any problem. So I don't know if it's a bandwidth issue. And what I would suggest is that we come up, if we're going to do something different, it's cost-effective. But I don't know where the problem resides, but I don't seem to have it.
Okay, so maybe you've noticed the screen here in front of me. This is part of the system we've been testing. We're coming up with a new agenda management system. And it's just taken a little bit longer than we anticipated to roll it out, but we're hopeful to have it later on this year. But that should resolve any of the downloading problems that some people experience.
Thank you. Because I was going to weigh in, and I saw the hand that I also do not have any large document download problems. And in my earlier years on the school board, when we first got into electronic documents, they came in chunks. And it frankly became a headache to assemble the separate files into a coherent document that during the meeting, you could quickly index and navigate through. So I much prefer, for us up here, the singular document, common hot link navigation. Having said that, just because some of us at home perhaps have the bandwidth, if you could offer, if it came to offering either-or, I would suggest, offer both. If somebody needed segmented, smaller downloads, they can have that choice. If someone wants the master file, click on the master file link and get the whole nine yards.
Just a quick question. Is that Exella that we're using for that?
That's what we're exploring, yes.
Yeah, because I have, I have experience with Exella and agendas. And it, once it's up and running with all technology, it takes a little bit of tweaking. It is wonderful because you pull up the agenda and you click on the item, it pops up, you don't even need an Adobe Reader. It pops up in your browser, and then you can download it as PDF or print it right there. So you could bookmark staff reports if you're into that kind of thing. It's really easy to use, so.
Yeah, the bookmarking is a great feature for that product.
Yes, and searching. So thank you for working on that.
You know, I'll just add, you know, that before we went to our new agenda, our recent agenda management system, we were printing 35 packets, and we're down to nine now. So it's been a real cost savings, you know, for paper and also being a lot more green. So, could you imagine 35 of these 1,200-page packets?
Oh, we agree. It's, it's an environmental waste.
Oh, yeah.
When they're not needed permanently. Anything else, Councilwoman Werner?
No, that was it. I just wanted to make sure it was easy and we don't change it. Because I totally agree, trying to assemble separate documents is be untenable.
My matters to report, I also attended the mayor's State of the City at the chamber. I don't know what we've done the last couple of years. Certainly, staff can host PowerPoint, but I actually found, this year maybe even more so than prior years, that the mayor's oral history of stitching together the story and the vibrancy of Livermore in the PowerPoint makes it compelling. And if there's any way to host a viewable video on the city website and say, click here, to actually hear the mayor's State of the City thing, just like we do on the council meeting things, it might just make it that much better to get the information out. And I also attended the monthly meeting of the Livermore Downtown Association. And things are always busy downtown. They're working hard on all burners, and Fourth of July is next week. So look forward to seeing the community downtown and another fabulous downtown Fourth of July evening. And with that, Councilmember-
Honorable Vice Mayor, as unusual as it is, your city manager actually has-
Really?
...a report this evening. Because we are in the right part of the agenda for that.
That's right.
And normally, I don't want to get between you and the door. But tonight, we do have a very special event. This will be the last city council meeting that our assistant city manager, Jenny Harayama, will be with us. And actually, it'll only be a few more days that she will carry that assistant in her official title, because of course, she is going on to be the city manager of Scotts Valley. And so we are extremely pleased for her. I want to be clear about that. We're pleased about, you know, that's a great thing for her. For us, it creates some challenges here, but we are using those challenges, as you know, to do some very interesting and creative things from a restructuring standpoint. So we look forward to our opportunities as well. But I want to take this opportunity to thank Jenny personally for all of your help here during her time that she's been with us, and to wish her well. And wanted to do that here publicly so that you all are aware of that as well, of course.
You hired a good one and turned out another city manager. Can't ask for more success than that. We appreciate, maybe it was short, maybe it felt lengthy, depending on the issue. But Jenny, we really appreciate, we really, forever, we really appreciate your service. So thank you very much. And with that, Councilmember Werner will be departing. That leaves the three survivors, and we still have a quorum. And now, staff, item 6.01, discussion and direction regarding the First Street land use study, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gary, and members of the council. Good evening. I'm Christine Rodriguez. I'm the project planner. The First Street Quarter Land Use Study evaluates the feasibility of converting an existing 42-acre area of, located on the south side of First Street, between Scott Street on the west, Travano Road on the east, and the, excuse me, it's the feasibility of converting the area from commercial service land use to residential. Currently, the study area is comprised of two non-conforming residential uses and a mix of service commercial uses, including auto-related services, home improvement, lodging, small professional offices, and a PG&E corporation yard. This is reflective of a time when First Street was actually State Route 84. The west and east ends of the study area are fully occupied and viable, while the majority of the middle portion is underutilized. Council authorized this study back in November 2014 in response to a development application received for two parcels in the middle of the study area. The application was for a general plan amendment, rezone, and subdivision of approximately six and a half acres for 108 townhomes on what's known as the old Cotteroli Auto Dealership in this area. Rather than consider the six and a half acre development in isolation, council authorized the study to comprehensively evaluate the larger 42-acre commercial area. The study includes three key components: comprehensive outreach with property owners, business operators, and interested community members; a survey of existing citywide commercial service land inventory and a market analysis; and assessment of availability of services such as schools, parks, police, and fire; and the availability of infrastructure such as sewer, water, and transportation. Ultimately, the study concludes that there are negligible fiscal impacts, adequate services and infrastructure, and sufficient commercial service land within the city to accommodate a full conversion of the entire 42-acre area. However, the community input and market analysis portions of the study reveal that the west and east ends of the study area contain thriving, viable, synergistic businesses. It is the middle portion of the study area which is underutilized. Therefore, the study concludes a conversion of only that middle portion may best serve the city, community, and study area stakeholders' goals and objectives. The middle portion, which is highlighted in the red dashed area, contains approximately nine parcels and is about 24 and a half acres in size. Should the council choose to consider a partial conversion, staff recommends implementing this via a general plan amendment. That general plan amendment would establish the First Street, the First Street Transition Area. Similar to the other four transition areas already contained in the general plan, this First Street Transition Area would have a dual land use designation of service commercial and urban high two. The dual designation gives the landowners a choice, allowing the transition area to convert over time and the existing businesses to remain as legal conforming land uses. The UH2 designation allows eight to 14 dwelling units per acre, and this density is appropriate given the surrounding context, which includes an active railroad corridor on the south, a major street on the north, and a mix of adjacent residential neighborhoods developed at various densities, including urban high two. Urban high two accommodates a variety of housing types, including attached single-family and townhouse units. If directed, staff would return to the planning commission and council with language for a new transition area. The transition area language would require that any future development proposals be subject to environmental, site plan, and design reviews. The transition area language would also address major project features, including the look and feel of the First Street frontage, internal pedestrian and vehicle circulation, and buffer zones along the east and west where it would abut existing commercial uses. And this concludes staff's presentation this evening. Staff and the consultant, Lisa Wise, from Lisa Wise Consulting, are available for any questions you may have.
I do have two speaker cards on this, but before we go, there any questions of staff or the applicant at this point? Okay, thank you. I have two cards. Andrew Baker?
Good evening. Let me say again that we have a housing crisis, a housing affordability crisis in the city of Livermore. So I strongly support transitioning land use in this area to residential to increase supply and to address this housing affordability crisis. I also want to say a word about something that's perhaps even more important than that. On January 29th, there was a murder on the corner of First and Scott. You can see that intersection there. And the murder weapon was a motor vehicle. And this is actually a predictable consequence of running a four-lane highway like First Street through a residential neighborhood. So when you rezone this as residential, as you should, you should also consider narrowing First Street, adding pedestrian improvements, perhaps lowering it from four lanes to three lanes. Studies have shown that these kind of changes can reduce speed, which is what we want in a high-density residential neighborhood, but will not actually reduce the total volume of traffic that's carried on the street. So as you consider the land use in this area, I hope you will also consider pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. Two comments on the previous speaker. One is that building more residential won't change the price. The problem is regional, not local. The, if you added, you know, 500 new units, it wouldn't change the price of housing in Livermore. The second thing is, I don't think it's a good idea. At Mines Road, First Street is six lanes. It narrows to four. I'm not sure how you narrow it to three, but it probably will cause massive congestion. The parcel under consideration is fairly isolated. It's got the four-lane road on the, on the north, and the railroad tracks on the south, commercial on the east and west. There are no parks. School access for children, particularly elementary school access, will be problematic. The financial analysis seems to actually understate the cost to the city, since it doesn't seem to include a multiplier effect for keeping money in the city. If you move any future automotive-related uses to Vasco Road, they probably won't be successful, and people will end up having to commute to Tracy or Dublin to get their cars fixed or bodywork done. I think at this point, there is no real replacement land. I mean, the land at Vasco and Greenville is essentially becoming residential now to handle the proposed new BART station that will follow the one at Isabel. So you'll just move the problem out there. And I don't think there are, that residential is really compatible with this, this site. However, if you do do it, I would urge that you encourage the property owners to consolidate and put a buffer on all four sides of this project, and concentrate the residential in the center with parking toward the edges, and perhaps shared parking with a single parking structure and pathways, and reinforced pathways for fire protection to the individual units. I think you can get a lot more greenery that way. But I, again, I urge, I think that the highest and best use for this parcel is the current use. Dual uses don't seem to work very well, because you get people on adjacent parcels who want different uses. And eventually, you end up with spot zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have.
Can I, I wanted to add a clarification real quick, and you have guys to give them.
No, I have one more.
Mr. Stein had said something about the automobile businesses. Just for clarification, the current automobile businesses, the body shops and all that, are outside of the area we are considering. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Addressing the housing crisis that we have and-
Excuse me, I have one more speaker card. Have you filed a speaker card?
What's the number? You said there were no more, but-
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I do actually have one more.
Oh, okay.
So would you please turn it in, turn the card into the clerk?
Yeah, what's the number on that?
601.
601?
And the next card I'd had pending was Guy Houston.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. Guy Houston here. I've been assisting Valley Oak Partners, one of the proponents through this amendment process. I want to thank staff for the work. We've been at this study for about a year and a half. The study took a very comprehensive approach. And as staff mentioned, it looked at availability of services, parks, school, police, infrastructure, traffic impacts, commercial land availability in the community, and extensive, right here in this room, community outreach among the neighbors and the business owners. So the process worked, we believe, because in the beginning, we started out with the entire area under consideration, all 42 acres. And though, through the analyzing these different factors, determined that the recommended course of action was a partial and not a full general plan amendment. We believe that this course best addresses the objectives of the community and the study area stakeholders. This land use change will further benefit the development of the city's downtown. Proximity to downtown provides the perfect synergy. It is close enough for convenient walking distance. New residents become new customers for retailers, restaurants, entertainment venues in the downtown area. Valley Oak Partners and the old Ford Cotteroli site is ready to take advantage of this conversion. We're all very cognizant of the, all the great things that are going in the city, and there's a priority for resources. But we know that the importance of the downtown is very important, and believe that this conversion will be of a great benefit. So we'd like to request, as part of your direction given to staff, return with a general plan amendment as soon as possible, and then prioritize our project application to allow that project to return to council as soon as possible to that general plan amendment. Thank you very much, and look forward to any questions you might have with, with our group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now Connie?
So I talked to a lot of people, and, you know, we're discussing a lot of the building that's going on in Livermore. And what we don't like about it is a lot of the infrastructure is just really- is just really too old to handle. The, I, I heard them called ant hills. Not everybody wants to live in high-density areas. Some people that have moved here, you know, they moved into a neighborhood because, and they put a lot of money into their home. And, you know, that's the kind of environment they needed for a home. And I think what we really need to start focusing on is going out with our high-density out. You know, if we have a neighborhood that's pretty much built out and established for a while, I think it's really unfair to dump these ant hills in areas where, you know, people never in a million years would have expected this. I might be wrong on First Street. I know walkable communities, the environment's very important, but other environments are important as well. And some of the things that are being built, you're not thinking about the whole general population being able to go and live in these because, you know, the straight-up aspect where you're dealing with stairs, 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 no elevators. You're going to get a handful of certain types of people in these areas. You're not going to get like different age groups because, you know, an elderly person could not handle it with their knees, you know, and the stuff that was built in my neighborhood. And I really, really think there's a place for high-density building, but I don't think you should infill. I think it should go out. I think that, you know, like I know Mark, you say that by default, you know, closing the borderlines that by default we're, you know, going to have to build up. I think we should go out with our high-density because some people who moved here and have established their lives here really need that space a little bit. And I think we're just overcrowding our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll return it to the council for questions, comments, and discussion.
Sure, I'll go first. I think using the term "underutilized middle portion" is about the nicest description I've seen for this section of town. You know, the, the vacuum cleaner and sewing machine shop went belly up and since then, it hasn't been the best-looking area. I, I do want to comment on the, the amount of work that has gone into this, seeing that it was started back in December of 2013 with the original application. And then, a year later, was decided to do this study. I, I think that we have taken a very careful and thoughtful approach to this entire segment. Initially, when I found out about the, the project and the, you know, the initial thoughts of the study area being, you know, all of the retail as well to the, to either side, I was concerned because there are thriving businesses and I'd hate to see them go. I understand that, you know, this was Highway 84 at one point. And at one point, it made sense to have auto dealerships there, but it just no longer appears to be advantageous to keep that land for, for that kind of use, in particular when it's been abandoned for years and you just see rotating uses through those sites that never really seem to stick around. One of the questions that I do have would be if we were to pass this tonight, what is the timing? When can we see, expect to see that general plan amendment come before us? And then, as Mr. Houston pointed out, Valley Oak Partners, they have an application. What would be the timing there after the, the general plan amendment if this goes through? So it's just a question I have for staff.
Yeah, if the council directs us to move forward, then we would first stop at the planning commission. Again, we'd be taking a general plan amendment and a, a transition plan to them and then back to the council sometime in the fall.
Before the general plan amendment? And then the, they still have a project application? And, you know, the, the reason why I mention is because, you know, you see that somebody did apply in 2013. I'm just wondering then how soon after that would we expect that application to? I guess it's still active? Is that, i- it was never, so it's been an active application since December of 2013?
Yes, this, this application, their application is part of this study.
Okay, so it's part of...
A larger study.
Okay, so, but they would still have to go through the, the process of planning commission after the general plan amendment? Or would that be during? I'm just trying to get a sense of timing.
They would go to the planning commission for the general plan amendment and the transition plan and then return to the planning commission for an entitlement.
Okay, so that would be fall timeframe as well or winter?
Probably with the entitlement, probably late, late end of the year, beginning of, beginning of 2017. By the time the project is entitled.
All right, the other comment that I wanted to make is that, you know, I, I understand the concerns about traffic and circulation and issues, but we're not looking at any specific project application this evening. It's, it's the, I don't want to say just the general plan amendment because it is very important, but that's the issue that we're looking at tonight. And, you know, we can address those issues and, and talk about the issues with each project application that we receive from here on out. So with that, I can, I can support the general plan amendment for the transition for this, for the First Street corridor.
First off, thank you for your patience. This has been a hot, long time coming and I absolutely am very excited with staff's proposal to keep the, the ends as is because those are very nice businesses and they're thriving. I share Mr. Barker's concerns about the safety of First Street. I, I appreciate the fact that you guys have restripped that pedestrian walkway that's in this area. But years ago, I don't know if you guys remember, I would, some of you probably do. One of my Girl Scouts was killed on First Street in a vehicular accident right across from this project. And so as any applicants come into here, I really want staff and everybody to think about, how are we going to make First Street safe? Whether that is putting a median throughout this entire project so we can't have left-hand turns crossing First Street, certainly enhancing bike lanes and all of that to ensure the safety of people along here. I'm very interested in how we're going to do that and then also exactly, as projects come, how we're going to handle that intersection at Portola first, where that crosswalk is. We might have to do a little bit more to keep that safe. But certainly want to make sure that we have bike lanes on both sides going in and out of the project area, which will then obviously impact the ability to have lanes on, on First Street. I certainly am not in support of going down to, you know, one and one, but want to make sure that we, and, address the safety of that site. And I absolutely love that, what you've done with the project and all of the hard work that's gone into this. And thank you very much. I know it's been frustrating and time-consuming for the applicant. And again, do support fast tech, bleh, can't even talk, fast-tracking that application that was from 2013, if you can call that fast-tracking, from here on out so that we can get this project on the books for them.
So several observations, kind of working, not backwards, frontwards. I was one of the proponents of proceeding with this study because the land was underutilized and in effect, I would say it had by default fallen into spot zoning of underutil, underutilization. Since this planning process has gotten underway, we've been told anecdotally and formally that PG&E is going to dispose of the yard. And, and that takes several years. That's not an overnight process, but eventually the opportunity for land aggregation exists. I agree with councilmember Spodowski and Turner. This is the right overlay or dual dense, dual zone to consider. And if the market within our infill housing standards, and I'll say that broadly, within our infill housing standards can convert part or all of this to, to a better social use for, for the quality of life in Livermore, we should certainly continue to walk down that path. Couple of observations we, we touched on. I think the traffic study, the bike and pedestrian safe access back over the, the railroad overpass to truly get into downtown, I think needs to be really well-baked. So while I understand the applications, been lingering pending this study, I, I want the best minds, applicant and staff to look at the traffic safety, the throughput. Mr. Stein makes a good point. How, how do kids even access a bus stop? If a kid wants to hop on a bicycle, and we've seen in other communities now, what I'll call bifurcated bike lanes, separated bike lanes, bike overpasses. I just think if we're going to, including the PG&E parcel, puts, put a, a medium amount of, of density housing in here over the 50-year perspective, what are the road improvements that this transition? Second point, we certainly don't have the easy land to push the auto retail businesses and support businesses out. That was never this council's intent. And since they're thriving and since the property owners have no indication of wanting to convert, I, I'm beginning to question, and this is the research question for staff to ponder, do we really make the dual land use designation over the auto businesses? Or does that maybe incentivize them the wrong direction? Or is the dual use strictly over the, the non-auto businesses?
Yeah, the dual use would only be in the red area.
Perfect, because I don't want to incentivize actually the auto businesses to in five years say, oh, look at all the housing go up. I can kick the auto businesses renters out and convert to, to housing and make more per acre. So I think those are important businesses. I patronize several of them in both parks. I just can't imagine staff was correct where we would relocate them to. It, it would be difficult. On the subject of infill housing, I hear loudly the constructive conversation in Livermore about the quality, style of infill housing. But the fact is, the voters of Livermore spoke and enacted an urban growth limit line. We will not sprawl past the urban growth limit line without another vote of the voters returning this city to a sprawl mentality. We might as well think of it as the Great Wall of China. We can only develop the available land within the urban growth limit line and its vacant, underutilized parcels like this or it's occasionally, occasionally changing general plan designations to allow more infill residential rather than the older historic uses. And I think Councilman Spodowski said it well. In the day, as a four-lane highway with gravel trucks and everybody else on it, car country, Livermore, what was, was great in the 60s and 70s and that era has passed. So we need to convert it. My sense of timing is whatever it takes for staff to get not just the general plan overlay issues right, but we want the applicant to come in with one or more site designs that meets our standards and gets through the planning commission on the first try. When we do an infill project and conversion like this, let's just do whatever it, it takes and then march to an arbitrary beat of the clock. So with that, you also have my support to proceed with the dual designation on the underutilized parcels and continue the staff work with the applicants and all.
Is that a motion?
Well, it's...
You can do a motion to recommend, essentially if you're agreeing with staff's recommendation. Is that...
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
I?
Hearing no further discussion, I'll use the Hagerty Rule of Business. There are the no-nos, the, the eyes have it. Thank you very much. You, you have your direction. So now, staff, the remaining information item tonight is 6.03, Discussion and Direction Regarding the Community Council Energy Joint Powers Authority. Staffs, plural.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Mayor Gary. What you have before you this evening is a staff report articulating what is contained within the joint draft, joint powers agreement for the East Bay Community Energy Authority. Just to review why we're here today. Back in May, the county presented this program to the city and what it intends to do. What this is, is an opportunity created by the legislature, legislature back in 2002 whereby cities and counties can, by energy and a community-wide basis, by pulling their customers and their demand. For this particular project, a, a steering committee was created and our own Councilman Spodowski was one of the members from Livermore to participate on that. And this joint document before you would actually form the JPA, the, was now titled the East Bay Community Energy Authority, should you choose to go that option in October. What we have now is the formation document going through the county board of supervisors in mid-July. It's before you to see whether you have any comments or suggestions relative to the language. The staff report highlights a number of items. And being cognizant that I am the last presentation before you adjourn today, I can give you a deep or just skip over the top. My preference is just to highlight some of the areas of, that you need to be aware of. One, the board formation. Every city who joins has one voting member and has the opportunity to appoint an alternative. The board member needs to be a council member. The alternative can be almost anyone in the community you, you choose to appoint. The board itself could remove any city's appointed board member. You get the opportunity to refill, but if for some reason you appoint somebody that they don't like, the board can take a vote to remove that individual. There are two types of votes with this JPA that is being proposed. One is a percentage vote. Each member gets one vote. That's a balanced voting. There's also a second voting shares vote, which is based upon the demand load of any particular agency. If a vote is approved by a majority of the percentage voting, the majority of the cities want to go a particular direction, any two board members can ask to review that member, review that decision through a voting shares vote. So I just need to be cognizant of that. That'll be based upon demand load. Livermore is articulated where we fall within that hierarchy. Oakland obviously being the largest demand user in the county should they choose to join. What is important about this document? Amendments are protected. It cannot be amended by a simple whim. You need two-thirds vote of either the voting percentage voting or the voting shares vote to make an amendment to this document. That's why it's crucial to review it today because if this returns to you in October, this will be the document you're signing up for to join this particular group. Certain items can only be changed by everybody. It has to be unanimous. That is the liabilities that are being taken on by the JPA itself. Those would remain the liabilities of the JPA unless the city decided to take those on. An amendment to that particular clause would have to be approved by all members. There are opportunities to withdraw once you participate. There are two standard opportunities to withdraw based on 180 days notice. That's 180 days before any new fiscal year or 180 days based on any change to the MOU or the JPA. So should you see a change that is being supported by two-thirds of the group that you do not particularly like or think is not beneficial to your community, you can choose at that point to exit. On the technical side, we're working through as the city attorneys how to determine what roles and powers any exiting body would have during that 180-day windup period. Probably the most crucial is a 15-day, a very short window within which, after joining with this particular JPA, should you choose to do that in October, the JPA would then proceed, prepare its implementation plan, go out to the market and see what the price of energy they could acquire would be. Based upon that, it's a very short window. It's an option that has a very narrow time period. That's why we have a 15-day go or no-go. What we would propose at this point is when this returns to you in October, to seek, if you're comfortable with delegating that authority to a staff member, Mark Roberts, or Stephen Kiefer, or Darren Greenwood, or whomever, to make that call. Reason being, trying to assemble a, you as the council within a 15-day window to make that decision whether to go or no-go would be very difficult. There'd be clear parameters of what that would look like to get a green light and that would be developed by that time in October. Lastly, with, with regard to debts and liabilities, as I stated, the JPA proposes that all debts and liabilities of the JPA be those of the entity. However, there's one opportunity where the liabilities could flow through. And let me give you a hypothetical. If the JPA goes out to the market and acquires an energy contract based upon the demand load for a particular city and that city decides to exit, there may be a cost associated with that exit. The energy may not be demanded or may not be utilized at that price rate. That is something that the JPA is evaluating right now. We're working with county councils for our city attorneys to define what those parameters are. So it can be captured by this agreement and brought forward when you actually have that opportunity in October to know. If you're in for this and you go and you buy energy, you're at least in for that term. So if it's a two-year term or a three-year term, you'd be in for that period of time. If you chose to exit, there would be a cost associated with that. The last item to highlight is there is a potential for a, a membership fee to be paid if you don't join up in October. There is a distinction between who are the initial members and then subsequent members. There, it's undefined what that membership fee would be. It'll be up to the board that joins at that time in October. I just want to highlight that for you. If you decided to wait and join at a later date, there may be a fee associated with that. With that, this is again, just a brief overview of what's in the more comprehensive staff report, but those are highlights to consider. If you had any comments or direction, I can carry those back to the county board of supervisors. They've asked for these comments to be returned by all cities in Alameda County by the first weekend in July.
Could you, just for the folks at home, we kind of jumped into a very technical issue commenting on a JPA agreement. Could, could either you or the city manager give us maybe a two-minute, the elevator speech of what we received in May, which is, is this mandatory voluntary? Government consumption only, homeowner, business consumption? What's the reason to, to do this?
Certainly. I did hearken back to the presentation in May, but to review what that was. Every city is given the opportunity through, by the state legislature to choose whether they want to aggregate the buying power of all its residents and businesses within its community to then become the energy provider. This would be a substitute for PG&E. But the, by forming this JPA, the city could take those customers... customers, then go to the market and buy them power directly, as opposed to go through PG&E. The customers themselves have the opportunity to participate, they also have the opportunity to opt out if they so choose. One of, some of the benefits being articulated for this particular program are that their energy could be acquired at a cheaper rate, that you can get greener alternatives to energy, and you can create different opportunities to create green energy through other different plants and facilities and opportunities.
Thank you. This, to be clear, this is one of the, one piece of the triad that PG&E actually performs for you as your energy provider. So PG&E actually performs three separate services, which are bundled together. The first of those is to acquire energy, okay? And that is what we were talking about substituting out, that this entity would actually acquire the energy. Second thing that PG&E does is it transmits that energy over long distances to get it to where the demand actually is. And the third is it distributes that to individual users, and then provides all essentially of the back office billing, collections, and all of those sorts of things. So all of those functions, we're not talking about changing. What we're talking about changing is the very particular slice of who acquires the energy, and what parameters are used for that acquisition. So it's not as if our good friends at PG&E would be going away, they'd be playing a different role.
I understand, thank you.
To clarify, you won't be receiving a separate bill? It would be a new line item on the bill. You would still see a PG&E delivery charge, a nominal fee, but then you would see an Alameda County CCA fee. And the way it could be structured, if you wanted to say that your household would only buy 100% clean energy, that could be set up. You would pay a premium, but you would know that everything that you're using is coming from a clean energy source. And the initial projections by the studies and the consultants show that we should be realizing a savings on the bills initially from PG&E while using a higher percentage of clean energy. As it was mentioned, everybody will have a chance to opt out. And then, the other point to make is that any potential, I don't know how you would define it, as profit or revenue over costs, could then be reinvested back directly in the county system, rather than going through whatever PG&E does with it now. So to make it in simpler terms, we could take the extra revenue or any profits and build our own clean energy projects in the county. Or instead of a $100 rebate on an energy-efficient washer, maybe you get $150 or $200. So it's still, there are many options, but overall, it is, it's local control. And it would be the responsibility of this JPA to make sure that the residents are getting what they're asking for and are optimizing the system.
Any, just what you have?
Well, as Judy and the audience can attest, I think we've had, the JPA has been before the 39-member committee that has been working on this now for about four meetings over four months. So we've, we started out actually with the JPA agreement from Marin Clean Energy, who they're up and operating and delivering on everything that they were projecting that they could. So we did base it on that initial JPA agreement, and then we have turned it over to, how many, how many times have the attorneys reviewed this? How many groups?
We've been collectively twice, we have one meeting coming up in July.
And that's how many cities in the county?
You're going to ask me that question.
It's not 19, that's Contra Costa, I know that one. I think it's 14 or so? 17? Anybody know that trivia question? Well, that many attorneys have reviewed this as well, and I do agree, on page 1,048 of our packet, there are two comments that were made, that the city attorneys are proposing revisions to clarify language specifically to the liability question, and also the initial participants and additional parties. And I agree with those comments, I think they're great comments, and we should get clarification. I also wanted to mention, again, the 15-day ripcord, so to speak. So if we join the JPA and we say, yes, we want to go forward with this, and the certain criteria that's laid out on page 1,046, there are several bullet points. The criteria such as, you know, if the authority is unable to provide the rates and the baselines that we thought we could to customers, if it's unable to provide electricity in a manner that has lower greenhouse gas emissions, and then also the renewable energy. So there are, the criteria will be set up, so we can pull that cord and say, you know what, we just, we want out at this point, because you're not, it's not performing how you thought it would perform. So I just think it's been very fairly vetted, and so many groups have commented on it, that I don't know if this is the normal process for forming a JPA. I've never been involved with it before, but I talked about, you know, viewing the sausage making at its finest, it's just been quite the experience.
I'm not sure there is a normal process for starting a JPA. But again, that 15 days, you said that they have clear parameters, but the question is, do you publish your agendas 10 days before your meetings?
Right.
Like, it's a very narrow window, so we'll be looking for some alternative direction on that.
Yeah, and we can provide that, I think, at the time, as you mentioned, that when we approve or reject the joining of the JPA.
Correct.
Okay, maybe we have, I don't know, on-call council members or somebody to discuss it with staff to see if it's, if it is a crisis, but I don't anticipate that that will be needed, but it's nice to have that there, so. As you can guess, I'm in favor of it, as written.
Thank you, and I think it also helps the audience to know from both comments that the broader context, that this is within. Councilwoman Turner?
I'm absolutely in favor of this, and I think it would be prudent to go ahead and put into the document now, if I have support with the council members, approval of the city manager and/or his designee to do, act on our behalf when there's a 15-day issue that comes up. Are you okay with that, or do you want to keep it to the council?
I would, I think I'd be more comfortable when we get closer to it, possibly.
Were you needing direction on that today? I thought, from my understanding, that you were.
Two things, if we're going to include it in the document, we need to have that direction today, because when this, when this project returns before you in October, there will not be an opportunity to amend the JPA document at that time. The county's direction, at least their request, is to have a solid document by mid-July that would return to the different markets. You can do something outside of that, as far as what you wanted to delegate for your particular situation, but this is not an issue unique to Livermore. For example, the city of Berkeley publishes their agendas roughly 30 days, their agenda process is 30 days before any particular meeting. So they are struggling with this particular clause as well.
Okay, yeah, I see, right, exactly where you're coming from. It doesn't, the JPA doesn't specify that it has to be a council member withdrawing or acted the council for the 15 participants. I don't, I don't think it was that clear.
No, we're working with that as the attorneys to see if we can get some language in there to clarify it, or otherwise get to an understanding that that is a delegable duty that can be delivered by any particular council to a staff member. Our preference is to have it clarified in the language.
Of the JPA. So it clarified as in terms of who can withdraw?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd be, I'd be fine with making that suggestion, that we clarify that it could be a city manager or designee of the council, so.
I'm fine with that clarification. I have another point of comment on the JPA agreement, and then also just a general observation on the project itself. I'm in broad support of continuing the research and development. Actually, let me start with a comment. However, I'm a little nervous, and strictly because this is a big, complicated deal, and when governments enter the private markets, we don't always do so well in the certain economic provisions of services and restructuring, so. I'd like, again, more information at the final, not again, I'd like more information at the final trigger pole, what we're obligating ourselves to. If it doesn't go well, when would we get out without damaging? In other words, what is the exit strategy if a couple of the pioneers, two years in, to pick a number, say, ouch, this hasn't worked out as we expected? I'm also concerned, as we see the PUC wrestle with PG&E on a variety of tariffing issues, that the law of unintended consequences doesn't hurt so badly damage the third leg of their stool, that we taxpayers end up getting gouged through unintended consequences elsewhere. So just, I'm not discussing it tonight, I'm just saying I'm optimistic, but it's also easy to dislike PG&E and just vote anything that maybe gives me choice, or, you know, two cents a kilowatt hour less, and then I find out in five years, did other evolutionary things in the rate structure, I'm paying it back and then some. So just, I want to be bright-eyed on this and not Pollyanna. My JPA comment is, that did bother me, two things on the JPA. That the quoting on page eight of the JPA agreement, section 4.2.2, that moving a member, that description of cause will be developed by the board, and so in other words, we're voting a JPA agreement that loosely says members can be removed, but the founders of the club get to decide the causation for removal. And what bothers me there is, you'd sell every elected official on the county if cause just simply said failure to perform your duties. But if it gets into, well, we don't like what the Livermore representative thinks for policy, we don't like Pleasanton's voting record, we don't like the Tri-Valley cities disagreeing within weighted voting. I'm nervous, so I think the removal for cause ought to be defined upfront by the founding members in the JPA agreement. It can't be that difficult, there shouldn't be 14 causes that would allow a board to excommunicate someone we appoint, who this mayor and council trust to conduct Livermore's business. I'm wrapping my head around, I just can't see why they need to go off and write a bunch of removal for cause rules, so. That was my, my second JPA comment, and they'll hate me for saying this, but again, they may want to discuss now, on page nine of the JPA agreement, the executive committee. The board shall establish an executive consisting of a smaller number. There are other very large JPAs in the state where the executive committee becomes disconnected from, from the members at a whole, and I think this, the founding agreement ought to specify the powers of the executive committee. So all of us subscribing members know going in, they're not going to form a giant board, and immediately, nine-tenths of the power is reserved to the executive director and the executive committee, just because it's easier to get policy made. And people have set this up before, I know we're not the pioneer county on this, they understand that, just ask the question, hey, is it really that tough in section 4.6 to enumerate the powers reserved solely to the executive committee? Those are my two comments on the agreement. Would you like a motion?
The direction's fine. Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, at 9:25 on a warm June evening, we have agenda, we've finished our agenda, and I will adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting, I've got to read this, of the Livermore City Council on July 11th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you very much, good night.